This meeting is being recorded.
This meeting is held hybrid, the commission meeting of physical location at the city and county building in the cannon room 335 and members of the public may provide public comment in person. Commissioners and presenters may join or participate either in person or through electronic means and you may also watch recording of meeting on the SLC rep commission meeting YouTube channel. Welcome everybody to the May or sorry, the June ninth 2022 racial equity and police meeting. So welcome, public meeting guidelines have been read. Open dialogue is the first item in our agenda. During this portion of the meeting commissioners may raise topics and discuss current events that may impact or influence the commission's overall work. Discussions and deliberations to provide recommendations to the mayor and city council regarding the Salt Lake City Police Department's policies, budget and culture. No action will be taken during this section of the meeting. Matters discussed during this section of the meeting may be scheduled on a subsequent agenda for follow up. Do we have any open dialogue for today's meeting?
Yes, I wanted to just express that thanks to everybody for allowing us to cancel our meeting on Monday. The newly appointed person from the chief's office was not able to be here until today. So thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Davis. Any other open dialogue? Alright, hearing none, let's go to public comment. Moana, do we have anyone here for public comment?
No, we don't have any from the public.
Okay, then I will, I think I can avoid reading the public comment requirements since we have no one here for public comment. Let me know and I will read it if we do. And do we have quorum, Moana?
We, one, two, three, four, five. We have five, so we still need, needed seven.
Seven, okay.
Maybe later in the meeting, we might circle back chair because two folks said they were going to be late and that would be four.
Absolutely. Alright, we will skip the approval and adoption of minutes. Let's go to the Salt Lake City Police Department Chief update, Chief Brown.
Well, it's good to see everybody. We were really excited about an in-person meeting, so we rushed over here to see everybody and say hi, but maybe next time. A lot of good work has been happening within the police department. We did, over the weekend, we had participated in first the pride parade. I don't know if anybody was able to come down and join that parade, but it was probably one of the biggest parades that I've ever seen in 32 years. I've been to many pride parades and there were a lot of people that wanted to come out and celebrate. And the parade actually was extended a few blocks, but it actually went four or five blocks past the finish. I mean, it was huge. Overwhelming support for, I heard a lot of great comments from the crowd, a lot of people thanking the police department for being there to support them. So it was really nice to get out and be a part of that parade again. And then we had Ruth over here at, at the festival for two days as well. That we staffed and we, we took pictures, we gave out different prizes, but we had a lot of good interactions with those that came down to pride as well. So we felt like it was a great event for us to be a part of, but also to interact with the community. It was really nice. So Evette, you were in the parade with me and Andy, you were here too. So anything you want to add to that?
No, it was fun. Brought the family down and they had a good time handing out stickers. So we got very positive stuff from the community.
We, we, we had, we've printed out 2,000 pride stickers and I don't know if you've seen the pride stickers, but they were gone about a third into the parade. I don't know if anybody's seen, we actually have a pride badge. Have you seen our pride badge? No, this is a pride police badge to the commission to be worn in June for, to celebrate pride. And I'll pass it over to you guys and see if it.
I did see the stickers, they were great.
Watch out the pins I'm unhaired, but it has, it has the circle of colors around.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe Moana can maybe put it up to the screen or send a screenshot out, but it's a really nice badge.
That is awesome.
And every, and officers can buy that badge and wear that throughout the month. And a lot of them have, it's a very thoughtful badge.
Who came up with that idea?
A few years ago, we started thinking of what we could do and police officers love badges and we, that design came up and I was like, yeah, that is way cool.
That is.
And we've got a lot of people look at that, other agencies and think we should do that, something like that too, so.
Think you started something right there.
Hope so, yeah. Not bad.
Good job.
And then another update for you, Commissioner, is Evette Zayas, right there. She was the XO for a couple of years, the executive officer for, for the chief. She did a fantastic job. Evette, you stepped up in a difficult time. You were my wingman, you were my friend, my partner. We had a lot of hard conversations, we worked very hard, but all things come to an end. Evette scored really well in the captain's process and so she was promoted to captain. And she is now over the Pioneer Division, which is the entire west side. And so she is now out running the west side of this city. And it's kind of interesting, she has the west side, Charlie Goodman, another captain that I think you've met and talked with. She runs the east side, Larry Johnson has the central position, so. Can he give us a few parting words? Now, look, Evette doesn't get to leave. I told her, I told her, she is, she's going to still stay engaged with RAP because she, first off, she really loves it. She loves all of you and she loves the work we're doing in the community, but she'll be here hitting this and then I'm going to introduce Andy Cluff right here, he's the new XO. But Evette, give us a few words.
I just want to say thank you for the relationship that we've been able to develop in the last two years. I mean, I think our collaboration has definitely gone uphill and growing stronger. The more we're working together, so thank you for this opportunity. Like Chief said, I'll be involved in what I can because I have a passion to bridge that gap between the community and law enforcement. And as we know, our profession is always changing and growing and Chief Brown is one of the greatest leaders to be at the front of the line and leading the charge. Thank you for this opportunity and you're in good hands with Andy. He's, he's great, he's smart. As you can see, he's taking notes looking type. I had the hand right. So we're going to keep taking this to the top together.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Indeed, congratulations, Evette. I'm very happy with you.
And then to my right is new XO, executive officer for the chief's office is Lieutenant Andrew Cluff. He goes by Andy. He's a great, great person. Andy, want to maybe give a little history of where you've been?
Yeah, so I've been with the department for 14 years. I've done a lot outside of patrol with bikes. I was a homeless average officer for three years, loved doing that, working with the community and the services there. Then I was in community intelligence. You know, I went to work with Moana, I was a car brayer at the time, I was the district pride council member. I love working with the communities, being engaged, looking for solutions to problems. So I'm really excited to be a part of this community as well.
Deal.
And then when I, when I said the coin, we really do, we did bring coins for you.
Are you serious?
I have to give you a little bit of a history of those coins. They're called challenge coins. They stem from our officers that were deployed overseas during World War II. They had different, that coins made up from the regiments that talked about, you know, that represented where they, who they were assigned with. If you went to a local watering hole or a bar and you didn't have your challenge coin, you put up one of the four, you got to buy the drinks. So they've kind of morphed down into police, police culture. We make ones, Salt Lake City makes a new one every year. We've been doing it for about eight years now and we hand them out in December, all the officers and then to, you know, other people who really like to choose. But the XO has the assignment of designing these coins every year. And this is the one that Evette designed. So Evette, you get to describe it and hand it out here and then we'll, we'll, I was just kidding, we'll maybe check on your points. I know Pastor Pastor Davis has quite a collection, so we'll add his as well, but.
So as he passes the pointer on, you'll notice it's in the shape of our badge to represent the badge that we wear every day. The backside actually has our badge on it. And then on the backside, you'll see it honors us being around for 170 years. Last year was our 170 year anniversary in March. So we wanted to get that on there. And then in the black, you'll see the wording that is from our policy talking about integrity and conserving the community, which incorporates our five core values. And then inside there, you'll see Saint Michael, who's a patron saint of law enforcement. So for me, handing this out meant a lot because I care about, you know, the troops and what we do. And so for me, it was like, we're watching over you, representing the department. And then in the sword, my close friend Sergeant Rest Peterson passed away last year on June 10th. And I snuck his identification number in the sword. So it says Kilo 71. So all the officers should knew and know that he's, he's watching over them as they patrol the streets every day. So that's the significance of our, that coin, 2021. We can't hear you, Chief.
Evette snuck that one in, honestly, but that's, that's really cool. You have to, Steve, you'll have to put your readers on to see it though. It's really small.
Yeah, it's hard to see.
I was, I was definitely just thinking that the symbolism is powerful and thanks for taking that, that, for seeing it in person. That's I've seen a lot of those coins and that you just described.
I don't have one on me to show it close to the camera.
I, I would.
Oh, I have.
That's the front side. Commissioners, that'll get you out of one parking ticket. I'm just kidding. Kid, I kid, yeah. Anyway, it's a really beautiful coin. It means a lot to us and so we give them out with our thanks and commissioners, we thank you for all you do.
Great. Any other updates from the chief's office?
We're still pushing forward on our training component. I think we're looking at some of the vendors are starting to submit applications and interested in it. So we're collecting that. Commissioners, we, I know that many of you want to be involved in that. That's great. So when we get to a point where we can schedule a meeting to review some of this, we'll have them come in and do their auditions. We will certainly coordinate through you, Madam Chair, and to have everybody that wants to be involved invited.
Yes, please. Please keep us updated on that one. I know a lot of us are interested in that. One issue that was brought to our attention by Reverend Lee Hawkins with the League of Women Voters is the funds set aside, or I guess funds to complete the internal audit that we discussed last year that we made a formal recommendation of. And it did not appear in the budget and I had thought that we had made that formal recommendation and that funding for that internal audit would come from the money that the mayor's office and city council had set aside for the commission and our recommendations. But it sounds like it has not been allocated or there's been some hiccup in getting that internal audit done. And so I wanted to get an idea of what your understanding of that was, Chief, because we do want to get that moving as quickly as possible if we can.
You know, Commissioner, Madam Chair, we didn't have it in our budget. No, you're right, it wasn't. So when we talked about the actual audit, we thought that it would come, it may be some of the money that was earmarked or the, from the commission. I know that there's some money in your coffers do that, but I, I, I think maybe we should go back, Moana, and talk to mayor's office and find out where their intent was for that money to come from.
Yeah, and I think we just need to follow up with Coletta too. I think that got, when she passed it to me and then we had conversations, that may be the place, but there is still money in the pot for the R E P. And Coletta did talk about that could possibly be where we could pull from and we wouldn't have to go through city council again. It would just have to be through our financial department. So I'll put that on, check on the agenda so that we can follow up with Coletta, Chief.
Yeah, we will do that. I think, I think when we, Commissioner Rosperos was, was with us, he was talking about the extent and the depth of that type of audit. And it probably ought to be, it should be done at an academic level, probably a university type study. So it's, it's, it's not going to be cheap.
No, absolutely not. I know. It, but it will work. Absolutely, yeah. No, we don't want a cut rate sort of internal audit. These questions need to be worded very carefully. And I agree, it needs to be done on the academic level. And I believe the audit that we were basing our recommendation on was done by the Pew Group. So we wanted to make sure it was done correctly the first time and we did anticipate it would be, it would cost a bit. Because you do, like you said, you get what you paid for.
So we, we were kind of just estimating whatever it might be. So we don't really have a hard number, but it, it's going to, it's going to be, there's going to be a cost to it.
When you, when you say you don't have a hard number, do you have some type of number that we can pause around?
I, I don't. In fact, I was just kind of going off what maybe Commissioner Rosperos was talking about at the time. He was saying it was anywhere between 50 or 100,000 dollars.
Yeah, and that sounds about right. For, there was an internal audit done at DCFS on a pretty larger scale because it was statewide and it was, I want to say that one was 150, I think. It's been a number of years since we've, that was done, but I want to say it was 150,000.
Moana, when we, when we say that we have money in R E P or R P, would there be enough?
Yeah.
To decipher from that?
Yes, but I don't know the exact number, but it's more than, than, there is, it would be money for that. It's just that we would have to have the okay from our financial division. So like how we were supplementing funding for, I think, was there one more thing that we were going to supplement, Chief? I don't know, the budget for something else. I should remember Coletta talking about it. The training.
Training.
So supplementing the training, similar to that, there would still be funding left. And I think it's just up to this commission and us finding out the exact numbers from our financial department to see if we could fund that. So it wouldn't have to come out of directly from the chief's budget.
Yeah. And then one more, one more update for you, commissioners. The position that we asked for, or we actually asked for your endorsement was the community outreach position. We've actually filled that position there in PR and Dorothy Rose, Rose Wild, Rose Wildy, I think it, I think it. Yeah, but she's doing great. Just today, they had 300, it was about 300 kids come over to the Pioneer precinct, say hi to the police officers and have some ice cream. So we're definitely with your support. We got that funding, we got that position. And we're working very hard to utilize that two or three times a week in engaging with the community at all different levels. So they were very much part of putting together the scheduling over here for the festival, pride festival. Again, they, they had this event today. So thank you, Commission, for supporting that. When you write a letter back to the city council and the mayor's office saying you supported, it means a lot to them that we brought it to you and you put your, your seal of approval on it. And then, like I said, I always wanted to let you know that the things we asked for, we're going to use and we're going to use, use them to the fullest extent, to build those relationships, to trust in the community. So I'll tell you what, I will send you kind of a list of things that we've been involved with, a few pictures, and then you can, you can see what we're doing with them.
That'd be great. Yes, please. Alright, any questions for the chief? Chief, any other updates? Nope.
I think you're doing a wonderful job. Serious.
Appreciate you, Chief.
Continue the success.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, next up is Utah Court's Office of Fairness. Follow up, we've got Director Jonathan Puente and Valeria Jimenez.
So I'm, I'm here today. Thank you so much for, for this opportunity to address, address this committee. Yeah, this is just a follow-up, just for background. Twenty, twelve, over 20 years ago, the courts had a task force on race and ethnicity to address those issues in the courts. Two things that came out of that was that historically marginalized communities felt that they were not going to receive fair treatment at the courts. And the other thing that came out of that was that there was this disproportionate representation of people of color in the courts. And this representation actually increased as the criminal process progressed. All of you can still find, here's a copy, paper copy of the report, you can still find the copy of this in our webpage. Again, it's over 20 years old and language is a little outdated, but a lot of the things that were identified in this report are still pretty relevant today. In order to address this, the OFA, the Office of Franchising Accountability at the courts, put together a red working group, race and ethnicity, race and I think disparity working group. We pulled in from all stakeholders, prosecutors, defense attorneys, law enforcement, CCTV, APMP, district board judges, justice board judges. We asked them to identify a representative who could speak on their behalf and do a couple of things. One was to identify decision points or touch points along the criminal adjudication process that may trigger a disparity. And the reason why we're going to do this is, one of the things that has always stopped the courts from addressing this disparity is our lack of data. And I want to give a caveat that this is mainly in the district courts and the justice courts. The juvenile courts actually have pretty good data and you'll be hearing from them after me. But yeah, our, our data is not, is not really reliable. So one of the things that we, so it's always been a barrier. One of the things that we have been able to do to get around this barrier is in partnership with the U, a couple of the professors through an algorithm, were able to find a way to help us get around this, this, this barrier. This algorithm is used by other government agencies like Department of Homeland Security. And what they do is they get a person's first name, last name and address, zip code, and they run it, they pair with census information. And they run their algorithm and they're, they say, you know, the algorithm will say with a 95, 96% accuracy rate, this person's missing demographic information is, is this. So now that we know, we have an idea of who is who, we can identify and see similar situated folks to see at, at, at different points along the process to see if there's any desperate treatment. So now that we have a way to get around this, our, our lack of reliable data, this working group is identifying these points to examine. This is the point where we are currently at. We have a, a working draft of this, of touch points that we want to examine. The next steps in this are, once we have our points, the professors from the U will run their algorithm. And they'll tell us, you know, at these points, this is what our findings are. So we have never done this, so we don't know what we're going to find. And as we look for disparities, it could be something simple as folks in this group get counsel a week ahead of time and that there's a world of difference, or it could be something more problematic like certain, this certain judge, you know, sentences this group a lot different than folks in other groups. Again, we have no idea what we're going to find. The second phase in this group is now that we know what triggers those disparities, this same working group is going to then give policy recommendations to the judicial council to address these disparities. And so this is more than just, hey, we're just doing a, a data project. We actually want to go after, after ration, I think disparities. So again, the part where we are currently at, this is what I want to report to you, is we're in this, in the stage of identifying these decision points. The key to this is those, those folks on the group, once we have identified them, they're to go back to their organizations and say, hey, here's what we are tentatively going to look at. And then they're to take this information and their groups are going to say, you know, if this is what you're looking at, we, we recommend that you look at these other points because they, you know, they might be related. That'll help us a couple of things. One is to get that buy-in from groups, like really in gen, like genuinely engage them and say, hey, be partners with us in this and as we look for these disparities. And two, it'll help us fill any gaps. You know, we might not consider things that, you know, a lot of these stakeholders might, might consider. So they might say, hey, if you're looking at these points, you have to consider these other points. So that'll help us close more gaps. But ultimately, we, this is a systemic problem and we want the system to address it. And that's why we, we want to engage all parts of the system in this. So what we're focusing on now is a couple of things. The points we want, that we're focusing on are, most of them involve judicial decision-making. And then we want them to have sufficient data variability. Also, with that, with that in mind, our, our main focuses are pre-trial release, sentencing and probation violations. So those are the main areas of focus. However, there's points along those individual areas that we are, that are more narrowed and targeted, but those are what our focus is on right now. And again, once we take this into the stakeholders and they see, this is the, the list of touch points that they, decision points that they have, we're going to then, you know, further tighten the points that we're going to examine in a study and look for those, for those disparities. So this is, this is a, we're about a third of the way in this process. You're going into this, when you, this is going to be about eight months to a year. The other component that we know is critical and crucial, when the original task force did their, their, their work in the late 90s, one of the things that they did was a lot of community engagement. Because these are the folks that are going to be impacted by these policy recommendations. So they helped town hall meetings and they, you know, met the community where they were at. When we started, we really couldn't do this because of the pandemic. So we were meeting with groups like this. We hope once, and even now as things open up and, and we hold hybrid meetings, you know, we see here that people are still like, hey, I'm still want to, you know, join virtually. So that's one of the things that we're trying to grapple with is engaging and working with the community, with the communities on this. So if you have any community organizations that have any community organizations that you think we need to present to and get input and get involved, get them involved in this, please let us know. We'll go, we'll, you know, like I said, a lot of them are still doing either virtual or hybrid meetings, so we're totally fine with that, because we recognize, you know, things changed from twenty years ago, but we really need to get their engagement and input on this. So any, any questions on our project so far?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
The touchpoints you mentioned, are those the pre-trial release sentencing probation violations?
Those are the areas.
Okay.
And there's obviously different touchpoints within those areas, but those are the three areas that we kind of narrow, where we want to, you know, begin our, our focus on.
Is it disaggregated from misdemeanors and felonies, and then also between violent versus non-violent offenses?
Yeah, you know, and so those are, those are the things that we were, the, the, the more targeted points we want to, can start with. And it's interesting, because truthfully, the first thing we needed to figure out is where do we begin examining, right? Do we begin when the courts take the case? However, we recognize that bias comes in, you know, sometimes further downstream, like the way folks get charged to how the prosecutors, you know, submit the case, so that was one thing, but now that we, you know, so we want to start like, okay, let's begin targeted where the courts actually have some decision. But yeah, those are a lot of the questions you have, the points you brought up, Nicole, those are the things that we're considering looking. So when we have like our draft of points more set, we'll present as a, here are points that we're considering, and then we can take that feedback, you know, and, and continue to flesh out our, our touchpoints.
Are you disaggregating Latinos and from the white population as well?
We're looking, what we're looking is, we're looking at different groups per, we're sticking with groups similar to the census and seeing, you know, among different, different ethnicities and see if there are differences among all, you know, these ethnicities.
The 2020 census groups, not the, the recommend date, the recommended census groups for 2020?
So here's what we did, actually. I'm so glad you brought that up, Nicole. One of the things that we did for this is we actually engaged the communities to, for a couple of reasons. Again, we needed their, we need them to engage with them and get their buy-in on this for a couple, for this particular reason. One of the things that we're doing is we are also asking folks to self-ID on the MyCase portal, which is the court's new portal. The reason we're asking them to do that is we want to use that as a validation for the algorithm. So because we recognize that a lot of these communities did not trust the courts, and also we're asking them to give us this information, we knew that was a heavy ask. So what we did is we worked with community-based organizations, and we did two main things with them. We started with, with the census demographic markers and said, do these markers, are these markers ones where your community identifies with? Because we, the research shows that if folks identify with the markers, you get a higher critical mass return. Folks, if they identify with something, they're more likely to, to, you know, to mark the box. So we did this with community-based organizations, and there were a couple of changes. One was we split Asians from Pacific Islander.
Yeah.
Because, and, and a lot of groups, they're kind of grouped together, but the community here felt that their lands and experience were, you know, different enough where, you know, we needed to, to separate them. And then the second thing with, with, with the, as in this engagement was, we let them know that this information was not going to be part of the public record. So if someone does a public record request, this information was not going to go, you know, with that. Also, that it was not going to affect their case, and that judges were not going to have this information on an individual. They can see it on the aggregate, but they were not going to see it like, oh, this person is this, you know, this, check this demographic box. So that was our messaging for when we, when we did that project, because we, again, we recognize that we needed to build, start building that trust. So we've been asking that under MyCase portal since January, and we're getting pretty good, pretty good return. But those, but, but those are the markers that we are, that we're using, is the ones that we engage with the communities, and, and they said, these are the ones that we, that we feel, you know, our community identifies with, and will help you get that, that that critical mass, you know, answers. Does that answer your question?
That does, yeah. And to give a bit of a backstory, the, there is a a set of recommendations, gosh, it was done over a matter, a number of years, I think, dating back to probably the early Obama era of questions, how to revamp the census questions to get, to capture better data on ethnic groups specifically. And there were some recommendations on a new set of ethnic groups.
Yeah.
And over, and you know this, Jonathan, we've, we've discussed this for the rest of the group, and for posterity, the, the, in focus groups and in testing, the new questions, recommended questions yielded far more, I guess, valid responses on where a person identified. And, and the biggest issue was with Asians, Asians versus Pacific Islanders, and also Middle Eastern, and then also with whites versus Latinos. And so Latino was, was included as a separate racial group, instead of being lumped into the white group, and they found that there were a lot more positive responses if Latinos were separated out, and if Pacific Islanders were, were kind of parsed out from the Asian group. They were rejected by the Trump administration, and so the old questions remained in place. So what, there's been a lot of push for organizations to use the recommended racial categories for the 2020 census, even though they were not adopted in the 2020 census, a lot of organizations have been using them because of the results they received. It's, it's a lot, the results are far better than using the old, the old categories. So that was one of my questions, and of course, self-identifying is always going to yield better responses than someone assigning a response to, to someone.
And, and to long, long answer your question, yes. Asians and Pacific Islanders were parceled out, and
Thank you.
Latino, Hispanic were also parceled out. So that's where we are currently at. Any, any questions? Well, thank you so much for giving me this time. If I can ask, please, again, we're like, maybe a third of the way in, please, for accountability purpose, and keep us inviting, invite us back. Next time, I will bring one of the judges that's chairing our, our committee, so you will have, you can hear from some judicial officer on this, on this initiative. And please, if there's any organization that you feel should be aware of this, or should, you know, we need to engage on, please let us know.
Yeah, that is, is great, Jonathan. Malana, can you send an email out to the Human Rights Commission for that ask? Because we have a lot of very well-connected commissioners on the Human Rights Commission. I think between all the commissioners, I think we know everybody.
And because this is the police scene commission, law enforcement representatives are, on our group are Chief Black from North Salt Lake Police Department, and Officer Purvis from Salt Lake City.
So when do you anticipate you'll be done? You have any idea?
You know, anywhere from eight months to a year, like, the original task force went four years, but that's because it went like deep. We're not going to go that long. But about, maybe eight months to about a year, and we should turn our recommendations to the judicial council to make, you know, for those policy recommendations. So I don't have my contact info. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Can, can we put Jonathan and his team on a reoccurrence, a reoccurring visit?
I'll reach out to Jonathan too, and we'll have you probably in a couple of months. Yeah.
So this question always comes up, so I forgot to mention this on this report, on my report. When they ask about, so this is mainly on the civil side, excuse me, on the criminal side. We are going to be looking at disparities on civil cases. We haven't, but we haven't started that initiative yet, but we will. So things with evictions, protective orders.
Law tenant.
We're going to, we're going to start that. We just needed, we just started with crime first. And our report is district injustice, because the juvenile courts started a year earlier, and you'll hear from them. I guess that's my intro for them.
You did my job for me, Jonathan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jonathan? All right. Thank you so much, Jonathan. It's always a pleasure to have you. Happy to chat with you offline about any of this. Please let us know what we can do to assist you as well. We're happy to assist you. We'll get an email out to the, the Human Rights Commission, because again, every time someone comes to speak to the Human Rights Commission, they're like, hey, do you know, we need to enroll with this community, and then of course, Commissioner Dumbia, or Commissioner Benuri, or someone says, oh, I can hook you up with this one, and this one, and this one, and this one. And I know the leaders of this one, and this one, and this one, and we can get you meetings tomorrow with these people, so.
Captain Zions, is that a question for me? I see your hand is up.
User operator.
Never, I guess, never mind. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. And next up is, we have
Oh, you're on mute, Nicole. I don't know how it happened.
I am on mute, sorry. We have the juvenile court now with Carlos Sabuca and Zerina Okanovic. Did I say that correctly?
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you guys for having us. So I am Zerina Okanovic. I am the Juvenile Court Research Analyst, and I have Carlos here with me, who is our Chief Probation Officer. And we wanted to kind of go over the juvenile court's efforts to reduce racial and ethnic disparity, and I will go ahead and share my screen. I have a little presentation. Okay. Does everyone see that? Okay. Perfect. Oops, that's wrong. Okay. So, you know, our current efforts for the juvenile court is to always have fair, diverse, and inclusive environment for our children and families. And we always want to evaluate our policies and practices and procedures to make sure that we are being fair and equitable towards our kids and families. So I will go over kind of just a list of our efforts that we are currently in right now, and then Carlos will kind of go into detail on a couple. So we first have our Judicial Racial Justice Network Group that we formed, and Carlos will, in the next slide, explain a little more. We also have our Probation Chief's reducing racial and ethnic disparities. Another one is our Board of Juvenile Judges Fairness and Accountability Initiative, which I will go into more detail in the project. It kind of overlaps very similar to what John Puente had mentioned. We also have, we're working closely with DCFS and KC Family's Core Group, and that is our way to create child welfare systems that are free of structural racism and benefit our children and families going through the child welfare system. We also work closely with the Utah Board of Juvenile Justice Racial and Ethnic Disparity Advisory Committee. So I'll go ahead and let Carlos explain our Judicial Racial Justice Network Group.
Yeah, hi, everybody. So again, Carlos Sabuca, Chief Probation Officer with their District Juvenile Court. So yeah, the, this, this particular group is one of our newer ones. It is led by Judge Monica Diaz, and she was selected as actually out of a, as part of a national group that's looking at these sorts of disparities nationally. So the, some of the areas we're looking at right now, of course, data is always important, and that's always, you know, typically the first place we start, so we are looking at that. As Jonathan mentioned, when he was speaking, we are fortunate in the juvenile court to actually have good data. You know, this is something that we have been doing for years. There's, we've identified that certainly there are areas for improvement, but we have, we have good numbers that we can use to help sort of explain the issues that we are experiencing. So just sort of to summarize, some of the discussions we've been having, and some of the areas we're looking at, making recommendations and changes to, you know, one of those areas is the assessments, all of our probation officers, they conduct risk assessments on youth that are referred to us, and these risk assessments really drive the trajectory through the system, whether they, they score low risk to reoffend, moderate or high risk to reoffend. It has a big impact on our recommendations to the judge, and what sort of interventions, you know, we, we seek to implement. Right? So, so we're looking at those to ensure that there's not any sort of bias that may come into that, whether it's an issue with the assessment itself, or whether there's perhaps an implicit bias component, you know, with the, the probation officer who is conducting the assessment. Another area that we're looking at, that a number of these, these groups, I believe, are looking at, actually has to do with access to interpreters. So making sure that documents are accessible in different languages, making sure that we have interpreters available. And there are times, admittedly, where that's been a struggle, where we have been, we have struggled to, to find interpreters, particularly for some of the the languages that we see coming out of some of our refugee populations. And, and so those are, those are areas we're looking to make improvements on. And we recognize that that affects other things. When somebody doesn't have access to, you know, to their language, you know, it extends timelines, it extends their time with the court, and we know that the longer a youth is involved with the court, the, the higher risk they become, the more, the more at risk they are to, to reoffend, or to, and, and of course, stay in the system longer, which, which we certainly don't want to see happen. One of the bigger areas that we're looking, that we're working on, actually, right, right now, currently, and we have been working on this, has to do with a cultural education component. And we recognize, and this is, this is education for, not just for probation officers, but for judges as well. And this is something we want to, we recognize needs to be mandatory for all, all parties, all employees. And, and it can't just be a one-and-done sort of cultural competency training that I think a lot of organizations have done historically. It really needs to be an ongoing, continuing, continuing education piece, something that's regularly, we really understand, you know, demographics, the people that live in our communities sort of evolve, and those things change over time. And, and so this is, this needs to be an ongoing component within our education program. We're also looking at economic inequalities, you know, that, we, economics tends to play a role in all kinds of areas within the system. I'll give you an example. You know, we have, we have youth, when a youth is booked into detention, one of the things we have to consider when we want to release a youth from detention is supervision, whether they can be adequately supervised. Well, if, if it's a youth from a single-parent home, where that parent works one or two jobs, that's going to play a role in their ability to, to provide supervision, right? So these are, these are components that we're looking at, and we're trying to figure out ways to mitigate, you know, these issues. We are looking at also utilizing, we, we've identified We are looking at also utilizing, we, we've identified that we have a number of staff in our organization, a number of probation officers and others who actually have lived experience, and we can benefit from these these lived experiences. And we, we have used them, we have started using them more and more to, to teach us and educate us regarding their own backgrounds. We have probation officers who have come here as refugees and have that lived experience. We have probation officers who are members of the LGBTQ plus community who have been able to educate us on, you know, on, on, on what things might look like from their perspective, right? So, so things like that, tho- those are, those are some of the bigger areas that this racial, that this judicial racial justice networking group is looking at. We're also working on developing an expungement brochure. We want to ensure that the expungement process is accessible and understandable to people in the community and, and that's certainly a document that we're going to want to have available in, in different languages. And other sorts of, there, there, we've recognized too that there are also a number of sort of smaller sort of low hanging fruit components that we can address right away. A, another example has to do with that. So we use a system called CARE. It's our records keeping system. All of our probation officers have access to it. The judges use it, you know, it has the social files for all the, the youth that are referred to us in there. And this is something, actually, we just discussed at a chief's meeting earlier this morning. Has to do with the profile picture, you know, whenever youth is placed on probation, the probation officer takes a picture of them, or when youth are also, if they're booked into detention, they get a picture taken at detention, and that picture goes onto this profile screen in CARE. It's one of the very first things you see when you look up a case in CARE. And we've recognized that some of those pictures may actually create a bias depending on the circumstance of the photo, you know, is, is the youth in a situation where you can very clearly tell they're in a detention center? You know, are they holding up numbers in front of them? And vice versa, we've had youth because, because of the pandemic, of course, like everybody else, we've done a lot more things virtually. So we've had youths send us their own pictures and selfies, for example. We have you send us a selfie of them standing in front of like, like a church or the temple. That may create a, a different sort of a bias, right? So we recognize that these are things that we need to we, we need, we need a very neutral sort of a picture. And I, and, and this is something we approved in our chief's meeting. Some guidelines, actually, just this morning to address this. And we're going to present that to Juvenile Justice Services, since they run all the, the detention facilities. And they've, they've already indicated that they're willing to, to go along with these guidelines that we, that we've developed. So, so there, there are a number of smaller items that we have been able to to address. Our, our chief's group, we have a chief's group that was mentioned on the, on the previous slide as well. Reducing racial and ethnic disparities group, you know, and with that one, we've, we've done a number of things. We've created what we call a roadmap to case contact. And that, that helps us. So if we go, if we go a few years back, you know, whenever we get a new case, the first thing a probation officer does after going through the documents, making sure they've got everything they need, is they send out a letter to the, the youth and the parent to schedule a meeting. Well, we've recognized, it may not be the best way to make contact with a family. If they need interpretation services, if there are other sort of issues that might prevent them, transportation, other things like that, that might get in the way, that might prolong their involvement with the system. We've recognized that it's probably better to identify those barriers right from the start so we can address them. And, and perhaps allow them to, to, to access the system as anybody else would, right? We can address those limitations, you know, if it's transportation, we can, nowadays, we could do it virtually. But we could also meet somebody somewhere, doesn't have to be at a courthouse, right? We can, we can make accommodations to help equalize whatever these differences may be. So we, we're, we're having our probation officers actually call the families in advance before you set up a meeting. Let's, you know, let's set up a time that works for you. We want to meet with you on your terms. If a family's got to work, if you've got, you know, a, a single parent or even two parents who are working two, three jobs, we, we want to be able to accommodate that. We don't want you to have to suffer financially, you know, to accommodate this meeting with us. So we'll meet with you, you know, seven o'clock at night, if that's what it takes. We want to identify whether there are any language needs, so we're going to try to do that. Do we need to schedule an interpreter for this meeting? Because if we miss that from the start, we just, again, we're prolonging timelines in the system. And that's, that's exactly what we don't want to do, right? We want to get these, these youth and these families, you know, through successfully and smoothly and as quickly as possible. So we, little things like that, adjustments that we've made to sort of you, you know, address some of this low hanging fruit. And, and there are a number of these things that we are looking at, you know. I, I already said, talked about, you know, the training implicit bias that, that's continuing to be addressed. This is something we, we are addressing with our management and having regular conversations with them about. We, we are doing, we are utilizing family exit surveys now to try to get feedback from parents and, and youth regarding their experiences with the courts. Do they feel like they were treated equally? And if not, why, why not? You know, you feel, you feel like, you, you know, your probation officer was looking out for your best interest? Any other, any other sort of feedback they may have. So these are, these are a number of ongoing efforts. We've done focus groups with our staff, with our probation officers to get feedback from line staff, people who are in the field. You, you know, working with these families one on one to try to get an understanding of what they're seeing, the challenges they're seeing, whether it be economic or some sort of a bias that slips in. I, I think John, Jonathan already mentioned, you know, we, we, we have recognized that sometimes bias slips in before the court becomes involved. But our focus right now is really on, you know, how things play out once we become involved. What can we do to minimize any sort of impact of bias? We know, and Zerina is going to talk more about this, but we know that the discrepancies seem to actually get worse the deeper they go into the system, which is, which is unfortunate. So this is something that we understand is, is going to be a long-term commitment. The, the chief probation officers in particular have committed, this, that this is probably, for somebody like me, this is probably a life, a career sort of commitment, right, to, to continue to, to look at these disparities and, and make adjustments where needed to ensure that we're doing the best we can to, to provide this, to provide equitable services.
Awesome. Thank you, Carlos. So this kind of goes with what John was saying about, you know, there's district court and then they're doing their work. But juvenile court kind of got a little bit of a head start because our Board of Juvenile Judges actually decided that this one, this was going to be the, their focus. And they wanted to see what is happening with our delinquency cases and if they are getting fair and equitable treatment. And because we have such great data for delinquency, we wanted to look at that first and we kind of broke it out in phases. And we actually finished phase one. We're currently working on phase two. And we have some, you know, for phase three, four, and five, just like Carlos said, this was kind of a long journey and even looking at our child welfare cases. So I'll just kind of go over what those phases look like and the results that came out. So the phase, for phase one, we wanted to look at the kids coming into court. Nothing that happens once they get into the process, but what is our population looking like? Who is refer, referred to us and if there is disproportionality at the point of referral and identifying those court processes. And so we worked with the Utah Commission on Criminal and Juvenile Justice, CCJJ, and they kind of helped us look at these analytics. And we first wanted to look at our youth in the state of Utah. So we see youth ages ten through seventeen, so that's the population that we wanted to look at. And we found that about twenty-five percent of the whole state is minority youth. And this goes, Nicole, because you mentioned it, we parsed out Hispanic and Latinos in the minority group. So the non-minority group is white youth. And so after looking at the whole state, we wanted to see what is coming into the court itself. And we found that about forty percent of minority youth are making up the court's population. So we can see that significant large amount is coming into the courts. And we wanted to kind of look more further into the kids coming, so we looked at what is the education level, what is the income level? So we used a lot of census data to help because some of the things we can't necessarily track in our case management system. We can, once the kid is in our in with the probation officers, but until then, we use some outside data. For our findings for phase one, we found that minority youths do receive disproportionate referrals compared to non-minority youth. So this is more minority youth are being referred to court. We also saw that minority youth are being diverted at a lower rate. So the way it happens is when we get a referral, a kid can go through a non-judicial process, which is basically the kid doesn't ever see a judge. They are with a probation officer and they kind of go through that process. And so we saw that minority youths are being diverted less. We also saw that minority youth tend to have a higher level of supervision, whether that may be with a probation officer or other, and when I say dispositions in juvenile court, that means basically like a sentence in adult court. And we see that there are higher levels in like detention facilities and secure care. And lastly, we found that minority youth are making, are living below the median household income. But specifically, it's true for minority youths. So that was the findings for phase one. And then we wanted to take that further because the judges themselves requested this. And they wanted to see, are there things happening on their decision points that are increasing? You know, a more disproportionate treatment. So basically, we're asking the question, are minority youth more likely to receive a more severe disposition or sentence after controlling for different factors relevant to the youth's case? So when, you know, a kid comes in, the judge looks at several different things. The history of the kid, the assessments of the kid, all these different factors. But sometimes we have these statutes or policies that a judge has to follow. And we're kind of going to go in deeper to see, are there things that we can change? To reduce this outcome, or are there things that judges themselves are doing that are increasing disproportionate treatment? So we do have that ongoing right now. We're working with some researchers. And we're hoping to maybe get some kind of results within the next year. And then we're hoping to move this further. We're looking right now on kids coming in and sitting down with judges. But we want to look further and see at different levels when they meet with probation officers. Is there other things that we can look at there or with our clerks and so forth? And then we hope to also look at this in a child welfare perspective and also see how our children and families are also going through this process. But until then, we are working with like DCFS to make sure that the data quality on their end is also really great, so we can start collecting this type of data and do a bigger analysis on it. And that's pretty much it on our end. So basically, we're doing what Jonathan said, we're just a little bit further. And we're all working together to kind of collaboratively make this effort. So I'll go ahead and stop sharing. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Awesome. Thank you guys so much for having us.
Looks like Jonathan has a question.
I don't, I don't have a question because I, I seen their presentation, you know. But what we want, what I want to say on behalf of the courts is that, you know, the, we are really genuine about addressing these issues of disparities, racial and ethnic disparities. You know, we have an office here, well, you know, the district courts, the juvenile courts, I mean, this is something we're taking really serious. So you can see the work that they put in. We're kind of following what, you know, their, their path. But we are trying to make the courts a place where folks can know that they'll come in and they'll be respected regardless of whatever demographic box, you know. They check that they'll know they come in and they'll be treated fairly. So just wanted to add.
I appreciate that, Jonathan. And I, I will say, as a practitioner in this system, there is a lot out of the court's control. A, a lot of, they, they start with a case with what's handed to them by law enforcement, by probation, by DCFS. So a lot of, there is a lot that has already happened in terms of bias and disparities even before the courts get these cases. That's not an excuse. And then, of course, it, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't do anything on the court side because certainly there are disparities. For sure, as, as have been shown by the internal studies by the, the courts, as Zerina has mentioned, Jonathan's mentioned, but also by outside agencies like the Voices for Utah Children. So I, from what I have seen in, in my discussions with other judicial officers, this is something they do take very seriously and the agencies as well. Juvenile Justice Services and DCFS have task forces working on these disparities as we speak. And I did forward to Moana the DCFS twenty twenty-two second quarter report, quarterly report. And they do have a, a group working specifically on, on those racial disparities because they are still happening quite a bit. I, I can't say whether it's better than when I was a caseworker, but I know that at least now it's recognized as an issue and it's one that's being actively addressed. But I do appreciate the work that you guys are doing. And please let us know how we can be of assistance. We've already said that to Jonathan, but Carlos, Zerina, please let us know how we can help and let us know if there's anything we can do.
Awesome. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Steve.
Nicole, thank you. So wow, a lot of data and very impressive. And thanks for doing the work. I, I think racial and ethnic disparities show up at so many levels and I'm really pleased at how, how seriously the courts are taking it. Both at the adult and, and juvenile level. A couple of things that Nicole said kind of just, just, just stimulated some ideas. So you get you get the cases that you get. And Jonathan, I appreciated the approach that you articulated, where you have a wide variety of stakeholders at the table as you look to see, without prediction, but you look to see where those those, those RED factors are going to show up. And then you, you have a team that is already familiar with the process to identify it, to make recommendations, right? I'm thinking of pre-trial, where I'm sure, I'm sure the jails are going to have a, you know, a stake and all that, right? And, and pre-trial release. And then Carlos, first off, it's good to see you again. And thinking back to some work we did with with outreach to law enforcement in the school system, where we articulate what happens to youth once they get into, into juvenile court and and the evaluations and, you know, lower level offenses and lower criminogenic factors. We really don't want to touch them very much, right? So, and then how there's, there's better treatment for, for youth who need more, more intervention. And then you mentioned expungement, and it made me, just made me wonder. I know you're both articulating internal processes. But I think there's such a need and it's so, could be so valuable to express the work that you all are doing within, within the court system to the people that feed that system and, and specifically law enforcement, right? And so we're the racial, we're the C rap here and we, we're looking at policing in, in Salt Lake City. And I'm wondering if there's an avenue for more education of officers about what actually happens to kids and adults who get into the system and using their discretion effectively. Sorry, I pushed the wrong button. Using their discretion effectively to make a good decision about putting a youth in or not. And, and specifically, I've heard law enforcement talk about doesn't matter if you arrest a youth because their case is sealed once they become eighteen, right? And I think that those that work in the system know that that's not entirely true, right? So there are still folks who get access to that and it can still create a bias for that youth. And that's the importance of expungement, right? And I think that a lot of officers think that that automatically closes. And I'm just wondering if we could do more with the education on what actually happens as opposed to some of these myths that persist. And expungement is just one example. You know, there's, there's, there's just others about the value of diversion and youth court and restorative justice programs where we can do so much. Where we can do so much more for these kids and quite frankly, their families outside of the court. I, I believe our courts do a great job with the right cases. So typical, Steve, that's a lot of talking to get to a question, is there an opportunity? To bring your message to law enforcement more, more broadly. Um, because there's a lot of decisions that are being made at that street level. We could be um, you know, impacting the results for our kids.
You know, Steve, I would absolutely be interested in pursuing uh. Perhaps a training component or something like that, like you said, to dispel some of those myths or some of those inaccuracies, because yeah, that, that. Those things do persist and we, we see that as when we have interactions sometimes with police, sometimes our POs. Um, will have interactions, you, you know, with police while they're dealing with a particular uh, uh, one of our juveniles, right, and. You, you, you know, and sometimes they have to clarify what, you know, what they're able to do, what they're not able to do, things like that. The expungement piece is a great example, you know, yeah, you know, records don't go away at eighteen, there's no. Uh, you, you know, it just doesn't happen, um, you know, and that stuff can affect. A juvenile, you know, depending on the, the record and if they're applying for uh, like, like a government job, you know. They may access those records, right, so um. You, you, I, you know, and we, you referenced, you know, the trainings we did years ago, I, you know, presenting to like. School resource officers and that sort of thing, and, and I think that's great. Yeah, and, and SROs tend to have a better understanding, because I think they, they do tend to have more involvement with probation officers with the juvenile system and just in general. Uh, right, but uh, but a lot of officers probably missed that piece, you know, so. I, I would definitely be supportive of putting something together, working with you on that, if, if that's something you want to do, I. Um, right before this meeting, I was on, I'm, I'm on a committee with the uh Kern's Community Coalition and they're organizing a, a pure court, you know, so. You know, we were talking about some logistics related to that, and that's, you know, a, a diversionary component, right? That we're trying to get buy-in from, you know, from, from the SROs and in the Kern schools and, and school administrators and that, and that sort of thing, so. Uh, so these are things that we are, we are working on in different capacities, uh, but I'd be all for. You know, I don't know what's out there, I don't know what sort of training is occurring right now, like in post, for example. Um, or in other sort of forums, it'd probably be good to identify what's out there, but, but if we can add to that or improve that or. Something I'm, I'm all for.
Yeah, and we're, and we're in Salt Lake City, right, and I, um, with your permission, uh, Carlos and I, I think. I think you just gave it, I'd like to bring that concept forward in our training subcommittee. And maybe you were, uh, one of your representatives can, can join us in, in how to get that message to. Line officers, right, so people on the street are going to be coming across these kids and, and help them with informed um. Information to, to help guide their decision-making and being thoughtful about whether a youth needs to be put in the system or not, right? And anyway, if you're open to that, I, I'd sure like to take that forward.
Yeah, that is a great idea, Steve, Commissioner Andrew Jordan, and I'm also wondering, Carlos, what are, what are your thoughts on, on? Uh, perhaps this training piece specifically, I think is a fantastic idea, I think that is going to be uh crucial for, for standard patrol officers, but. What would your thoughts be on a, a specialized um patrol that focuses just on youth issues? So, you know, we have our, our mental, our CIT teams. What would your thoughts be on a, a specific unit that just addresses delinquent youth and ungovernable youth?
Well, I think there could be benefits to that, depending on, I, you, you know, I mean, this is going to depend on a lot of sort of. Internal factors that I, I just don't have knowledge of, right, whether the, the staffing and, and manpower is available, you know, for that sort of. Uh, a unit, um, but, but I think there could be a benefit, as, as assuming something like that is. You, you know, the staffing is available, yeah, because you could special, you could train people who have a significant knowledge of the juvenile system. You could give them that knowledge and you could give them, e- even beyond understanding the system, I mean, as probation officers, we do a lot of training and things like motivational interviewing. You, you know, ways to elicit responses, ways to elicit cooperation from youth, you know, who, who are not always um. Happy to talk to us and parents as well, right, so, so there's a, we do a ton of training in that. In, in, in goal-setting and things of that nature, and, and the, and these are not super advanced skills, you know, you don't have to be a. A therapist or a doctor to, to develop these skills, um. But, but we know that they work with youth, that, you know, these are evidence-based practices that we've employed and we know. That they, that they work with youth and they work with their families, right, and they, and they do help elicit more cooperation. Um, so I, I could see an advantage to training, you know, officers who are. Uh, line officers who are having initial contact with these situations. In being able to, to sort of respond with a, with a motivational interviewing type of approach and perhaps have more success, perhaps. You know, encounter less resistance, things like that, but also understanding the juvenile process and understanding, you know, there are options using discretion, you know. Knowing if I refer youth to the juvenile court for this particular charge, this is likely what's the path it's going to take. Or if I go this path, you know, then this is, you know, this is what that, the outcome might be going that direction.
And also understanding that when they're encountering a youth. The, the youth's frontal lobe still isn't developed. And so not confusing standard youth behavior with, you know, say, delinquent behavior or criminal behavior, it's just. Standard fifteen-year-old stupidity.
Correct.
Which happens.
And um. The path that a, the case will take once it gets to courts, Serena, it, I had a question for you on, on some of the data you were presenting about uh youth of color getting deeper. Into the system, are, are those searches um? Beyond where youth would be offered a non judicial adjustment, are you, are you seeing that? Uh, with the, with the non judicials in addition to uh those.
Sorry, you broke up in that last piece, could you repeat that?
I'm just curious if, if the data you were showing were cases that were petitioned into the court as opposed to those where they were offered a non judicial.
Yeah, so, and I, and Carlos can also speak to this, but a lo- almost sixty percent of cases coming in are non judicial. So, you know, it's a smaller portion of ones that are getting petitioned and you have to have a lot um in order to get petitioned. So what we are seeing, and again, we're going through these different phases to kind of do a deeper dive, but we are seeing that non judicial. Don't get as severe sentences compared to um the kids who are petitioned and go the judicial route.
And are you seeing the disparities in both NJ's and petitions?
So we are seeing them, but we don't know how, how much yet, and we're hoping with that next phase to be able to see that more.
Okay, thank you, and then, I'm sorry, I'm, Jonathan, I just had one more question about um. How much respect and appreciation I have for the, the efforts that you're putting into uh correctly identifying uh. The racial and ethnic background of. And it's, it's a great way to start showing respect as soon as you come in the system, right, we value you for who you are. Um, but I just wondered about, like a baseline comparison, do, do you have? A, a method beyond the census data, like, like to get your disparities or? Is that something for the PhDs up at T U?
No, so, so I think what you're talking about is finding baselines and where to, where, how we're going to validate our data, right? So. Those are the two, the two things that we're looking into in validation, one. Is the self ID on the my case portal, like, hey, do we do, does? Does the algorithm match what we're seeing on my case? And then the other thing we're looking to valid to, and the other uh method we are. Um, or resource we're looking to validate is with our juvenile courts. Because I, as I mentioned, our juvenile courts have really accurate data, so.
Their systems.
So does, does the, the adult data, the district court data, this is, is in. Because what we're seeing is the same thing Serena mentioned, the deeper you go in the process, the, the larger the disparity gets. So, um, and I'll just tell you, uh, this might come as a shock to everybody here. But racism does not go away when you turn eighteen, I know, big shocker, right? So one of the things that we're, we want to do is validate our data with the juvenile data. So in a way, we have a couple of, 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 of baselines we can establish, because. Um, our data really wasn't that accurate and um. We, one of the things I'm looking into is when we start the, the civil side. We are starting from zero, because there is no juvenile courts and there's, you know, like, we never asked for any of that data and there's no. Law enforcement that has some of that data, there's no APMP that has some of that data, you know, with that, and a lot of our, most courts. Never asked for that, or I would say all, pretty much all courts never asked for that data, so finding those data. The shining of the lights at the courthouse, I apologize, um, so finding that those baselines is critical. Because those are starting points, right, that's how we validate what we're finding.
Awesome, thanks you guys, I don't mean to prolong the meeting, but great, great presentation, just to peek to a few questions in my mind, so thank you for that.
Yes, fantastic, and if we have other questions, um, of course, we can send you emails offline, Carlos, Serena, Jonathan. Awesome, and uh Moana, can you make those email addresses available to everybody?
Yes, yes, I can.
Awesome, all right, thank you, thank you so much, I, I really appreciate your time. Um, this was one of the, the big pieces we discussed a lot in the early days of the rep see when we were first forming. Realizing that a lot of this is going to be out of our control with the courts, Salt Lake City has no jurisdiction over what the courts do, they're. Its own separate entity and agency and completely separate branch of government altogether. Um, so, but we do appreciate the partnership and, and doing what we can to have better outcomes for our youth of color and our people of color in our communities, so I, we really do appreciate your time and efforts. So, uh, next up in our agenda is the Salt Lake City Park Rangers program. You're muted, Moana.
It's like we're doing this. Uh, good evening, everybody, thank you so much for having me, my name is Janessa Edwards, I'm the new Salt Lake City Park Ranger Program Manager. Um, I'm also a brand new city employee myself, so I am. Way out of my league in this year, but I am just in awe of what you all are doing and it just. Solidifies, um, you know, my decision to take this crazy job and for the city that I love and listening to all of you do. Uh, your presentations and your work is just incredible, so, thank you. Uh, I won't take up too much time since I know we're running a little late. Will you, Moana, I think that, uh, one page, can we just put it up really quick, so I'm not just reading from a piece of paper at everybody, um, and I'm also happy to set this out. After our meeting, um, so we are. Very, very early on in the stages of building this program, uh, I started with the city in early April, so I am learning the ways and who does what and who. Uh, I need to meet with, and I'm so glad that the timing lined up to meet, um, and to come listen to this commission, so that as we are building our training program for these rangers. Uh, I have a resource like this commission to, to come to with any questions that we have as we're. Working to really make um our city parks and open spaces a, a welcoming and a safe space for our diverse communities in Salt Lake City. And we are taking meetings like this, uh, to try to be sensitive to the fact that what makes. Uh, me feel safe in a park or on a trail might not be the same thing that makes somebody else feel safe in a park or on a trail or in an open space. Uh, so listening to our community uh groups and our um. Taking meetings with PD, we had also met with uh nine one one dispatch in the early stages of this program to make sure that our rangers are really equipped. To um do this job, and we are actually in the hiring stages right now. This program is, they're not law enforcement, I've said it eight hundred times since I started this job, um, and I'll say it again and again. Uh, they are there to help promote voluntary compliance in our parks, to educate the public about city codes and ordinances and why they exist. Um, and ask for uh community engagement on that level, but also. Looking at really elevating the usage of our parks in terms of offering a very high level of customer service, answering questions to park visitors. Doing recreational activities, working with schools around our parks. Um, so we are really kind of building a group of city ambassadors to put out in our open spaces. And we're hopeful that we can, you know, really start listening to um our, our community partners who, who want to invest and support this program. And uh some of that language up on the screen, I would love uh for all of you to offer any feedback if you have it, I, I. Again, being so new to the city, one of the first things our director, uh, Kristen Rambler, our public lands. You know, pitched me on was how seriously the mayor's office is taking. This, this actual work, um, and doing things like looking at inclusive language in everything we put out. Making sure that not only leadership is, is watching things like the, the DEI videos that came out of the, the mayor's office that are incredible, but also making sure those get filtered down to our staff. As a whole, um, so we, again, in the very early stages of this program, but, but I think it's, it's a perfect time to. Listen to commissions like this one, so that uh we feel like we have a lot of voices at the table as we build this, uh, this program and the narrative around it and the policy around it and the manual around it. None of those things currently exist yet, so we are, when I say it's brand new, I mean, it's brand new. So I, I really just appreciate you guys being here or letting me be here, um, and uh I had a meeting previously with Chief Brown, uh, a couple of weeks back, and. They are supportive of the program as well, um, and have offered to help us with some training, so as soon as I have a training schedule ready and I have people here working with me. I uh would love to share that with you all and, and be able to be effective and want to try to be at the Rangers.
All right, any questions?
So it's me again. You know, I know that Commissioner Davis, um, who was here, but he's unable to stay on the call because he's traveling by train. Had some, some considerable interest uh in our discussions on, in our training committee, I, I wonder. Uh, if you'd be willing to join us in a, in a smaller group for maybe more in-depth questions. About uh your hiring process and your training process for ambassadors. Um, in, in, I know that the Rangers are separate from law enforcement, but in some ways they'll be perceived as potential law enforcement, which. Could be them, also, we want to ensure that we have the right personality and trained in the right way. To be an ambassador, not um a non-official police officer out in the park or something like. Um, anyway, I wonder if, if we could have, have time with you on your process. Whether it's at our formal meeting or we could meet you on your schedule, um, if you're open to that, I, I think the training committee would really appreciate that.
Absolutely, I, I apologize, I couldn't come up on Monday, but then I think it got postponed, there, and so I, yes, I would love that, uh, I, like I said, as, as new as I am, I. I have the time right now to really craft. The documentation and the language of the narrative and create the partnerships that are, that are going to matter, I, I, and, and it's kind of a nice case to do it in, because it is so new and that makes it very overwhelming, but it also. Uh, a lot, allows for a lot of voices at the table and to create foundational documents that are. Um, come from a perspective of inclusivity for, for everybody who wants to participate, so yes, I would love that.
Uh, fantastic, thank you, and if Moana is still there, maybe we can.
Yeah.
Let you make a note and, and communicate with Commissioner Davis, uh, thank you so much.
First, thank you, sir.
Excellent, thank you so much, any, any other questions, I, thank you so much for that update, we appreciate it. Um, any other questions from any of the other commissioners? Okay, I do want to take a. Oh, yeah, I want to take a quick moment to uh welcome Commissioner Satini to the group. Um, and she slipped kind of in and didn't really announce herself, but I'm going to call her out and say welcome to the commission. Um, this will be her first meeting as a, as a member of the Racial Equity and Policing Commission. Um, and um, maybe in, instead of uh maybe bumping her in line really quick to um give a quick hello. Commissioner Satini?
I was invited on um, on short notice, just tuning in and happy to. Just tuning in and happy to be here to listen to all of you. Thank you.
Well, welcome to the group. We we appreciate your willingness to join and and take a deep dive into some of this work with us. The next, um, of course, we're always open to to chatting offline and and um welcome you to join any of our subcommittees. If any of them meet your your uh curiosities. So the next item on the agenda is the Mayor's Office Equity Inclusion Team Update.
We can bump that. I I only put that in if we need, if we have time.
Perfect. And I think it's seven oh seven, so um, I think we can probably bump that. We don't have a meeting in July. Um, July is kind of a ridiculous month for scheduling for everybody. So um, we won't meet until August. Okay, um, any subcommittee chair updates really super fast? I know I don't have anything from the School Safety Subcommittee. We're just working on the MOU still.
And we canceled our meeting this month, so I don't think we have anything from the training committee.
Anyone from policy?
Yeah, and since you are here, we're gonna help bring your own to our team.
Good, good.
Okay. All right, uh, do we have anyone for public comment, Moana?
No.
Okay. All right. Well, fantastic. Then I um, I don't believe we have a forum, so we can just close the meeting today. Uh, anyone have any other questions, comments for for today's meeting? No? All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for attending. Chief, thanks for sticking around for so long. We appreciate it. Janessa, thanks for sticking around for our entire meeting. We appreciate that. And everyone have a lovely, lovely summer. We'll see you all in August. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.